It's five thirty by the clock up there, so roll call please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gager?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Mary Kovich?
Okay, if you want to participate in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, please stand. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, before we go into this meeting, we place ourselves before you. For you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about us. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to respect and understand the opinions of others. Help us to value and appreciate those we are about to meet. May your light enfold us. May your spirit guide us. May your grace abound in us. We make this prayer through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or relations to the agenda?
I know, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have awards today for proclamation. Do we have the people supposed to be here? What's going on up here? Okay, whereas the week of September ninth, two thousand eighteen, has been designated as the National Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week in order to celebrate and recognize professionals who provide support to millions of individual individuals with intellectual and development disabilities. And whereas this celebration recognizes dedication to the vital role of direct support professionals in enhancing the lives of individuals with disabilities of all ages. And whereas the community played a role in lifting up direct support professionals as integral in supporting the needs of people with disabilities and their families through services systems across the United States. And whereas the goals of the city and its Equal Opportunity Accessibility Advisory Board properly gives recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities to gain full access to housing, employment, and recreation activities that will help create a productive and satisfying life and also to live as independently as possible. Therefore, I J. Warren, Vice Mayor of the City of Arcane City, do hereby proclaim September ninth to September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, as the Direct Support Professional Recognition Week in the City of Arcane City and call upon all citizens of Arcane City to observe the week with appreciation, programs, and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Arcane City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning professional and support individuals with intellectual and development disabilities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. On behalf of Mosaic, I'm Jenny Foster-Farbar, the Executive Director. And this means so much to us and recognizing the hearts and hands of our organizations. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the hard work you guys do. Okay, number three, recognition of visitors. And we have one, Ken Herter, on curbside and dumping, if you want to come up, Ken.
I think you all know me, Ken Herter, North First Street, Arcane City. About eight weeks ago, I brought it before the Commission on Curbside Dumping. And I see Mr. Jurvis not here tonight. But he asked Nick to see, look into it, see what staff could do, see if there'd be any changes made. I wanted to mention also that I read in the paper about ten days ago that our city made news in the L.A. Times in California. I don't know if any of you read that, but I did. It hit me pretty good that they're already asking for tours. If there's tours or anything for people to come. Well, and I think that's great. And I know this commission has mentioned before that there's kind of a goldmine for our community if we can act on it or do something. Well, my point being here, with this dumping left on the curbs for weeks at a time, I mean, that doesn't look good in our community. And if we're wanting to invite people in and have people come to our town. So I wanted to ask you again tonight if there's any updates or has the city addressed it or talked about it? Is there any ideas?
Yeah, we're working on ones actually on the agenda in regards to making some changes in the organization, organizational structure of sanitation department. I've talked with the individual who's going to be taking over the role of supervisor for sanitation. And where do you build around some ideas on bulky item pickup and when to do it and how to accomplish it and also for pickup in general of sanitation items. So he's got some good ideas. I want to make sure we get them in there, get them, you know, set up and see what he can do.
Well, that sounds great because I think we need to move forward on that. I know Winfield's made some changes, what I've read. And I still thought your drivers can make note each week they go by, they see it.
Yep.
You know, and burn that in on a log at the end of the shift. And then you can act on it.
Yeah, and one of the things we are is, you know, bring the log up. Then if we have good information or good contact information for them, we'll put a tag on their trash can saying that they have extra items or bulky items and call for special pickup. And we do that already. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of response on that. So we're going to keep proceeding to try to get that incorporated. But what we're looking at doing is potentially at the end of the route, we'll have one truck that just does the bulky item pickup. Because some of the items that we receive, you know, been on the sides of the wood or if it's metal, they just can't go in the trash truck. And so we'll have to have a special truck designated to pick up that debris. So we've got some good ideas and I think we're going to make some pretty good changes.
So you're going to try to make some progress on this?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I like to suggest too, I know we talked about it a year ago, about Winfield and that every April through October, they have a dumpster where people can haul their couches and stuff that, you know, that you see on those porches and stuff like that. And it's all they do is take them there and then the city hauls it off. I don't know, we looked into that, Nick, or...
I'm sorry, what was that again, sir?
Well, we talked about it about a year ago when I talked to the guy up at Winfield. And he was saying that, I mean, the trace guy up there, and he was saying that every, or April through October, they have a dumpster out there.
The problem we have is a lot of our people don't have the means to actually haul it. And that's our biggest problem right now. And so they don't have pickups, they don't, they physically just can't move it themselves. They may be able to get it out to the curb would be the extent of it, but they don't have the vehicles or the means to actually haul it to the dump.
If you had forty percent or even thirty percent take it to that site.
Yes.
That would take the load off.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, even if you could get some good percent.
Yeah, and we are, we're going to have multiple options on it.
I know I'd haul something down if I had a place to throw it over into it.
And we're looking at, you know, got to recover a little bit of the cost, you know, maybe ten bucks, fifteen bucks. I mean, depends on what the item is and how big and bulky it is, but...
Do you know when that's going to be on the agenda or I just got to watch for it?
Just really, we already have it set up in our comprehensive fee schedule. So it's just a matter of individuals just calling and us moving forward with it, so. And we do it already. If you call ahead and tell us you have some bulky items, we'll come and pick it up. The biggest problem we have is we have some people that just take it and maybe just throw it in their backyard or then that's, that's a whole different issue, but...
But to see it on your main street through town and people you're wanting to come into our community, I mean, it's something I think that the city can address and improve on.
But it's one of those things too, there are a lot of people that just don't have the funds to do it either. So it's a balancing act because you don't want any...
But we can't just leave it out there.
Yeah, we can't just leave it out there. I agree. But they should be willing to pay something.
Right.
Thank you. Okay. There's any comments from the audience that's not on the agenda? We already went through that, I guess. Okay, the consent agenda?
Items on the consent agenda of the meeting minutes, two thousand eighteen Dodge Ram for Parks Department. And then a resolution for a public billing commission, five P.M. on September eighteenth, which is our yearly public billing commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no old business, new business?
Number one, consider a resolution authorizing the city to purchase the two thousand nineteen Jeep Cherokee Lightning four by four ZOMA Motor Company for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars.
This vehicle to replace the fourteen-year-old two thousand four Jeep Liberty that's currently being used by Bob Frazee. He utilizes this vehicle quite a bit to travel the levee system. Has to be a smaller vehicle just for the fact that can't have a lot of weight on that, on the levee, stormwater levee, so that's why we have it. The vehicle, has it had any major issues?
Front suspension, A-arms on it, tie rods.
Okay.
That's just...
But four-wheel drive, it turns like a torch.
The four-wheel drive's going out.
Does the, does the police department use it for the, for the schools anymore?
No, no, it's only used by emergency management coordinator is the only one who uses it.
So it's got seventy-one thousand miles on it.
Mm-hmm.
It's fourteen years old, which tells us it hasn't been driven very much.
I believe it came from the police department.
Yeah, it was, it was hand-me-down from the police department.
That was their dare vehicle.
It was shared at the time.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was emergency management and police department.
I, I don't see why we need to spend twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars on a vehicle. That's, I mean, I'm not a mechanic, I don't know what it costs to replace a tie rod, but guys do it in their driveways all the time. I'm...
I believe the usage of that vehicle that I recall is driving in some very hazardous areas around our county.
Yeah, up on the levees.
And this has been driven for, gosh, through every flood we've had since...
Well...
Since Moses was a child.
I think we've...
Fourteen.
Again, though, I mean, we're only talking seventy-one thousand miles. The age is not the problem.
What I can do is I can go back and we can get some estimates on fixing those issues and see exactly what they are. You know, I can have Tony go through the vehicle and take a look at it with, with, I know...
He's leaning back there.
Well, he just got the other Dodge Dakota that was scheduled to be traded in as well. And that vehicle is in really good shape. That vehicle isn't, it is now. It wasn't in good shape. It had two different front wheels or front tire sizes.
Twenty-nineteen Jeep, but only twenty-two.
But...
Those things sold for about thirty-five.
I know, I just, I just don't think it's something we need to do right now. Especially, I mean, let's put it on hold and let Nick look through it and...
That won't hurt anything if you, if you guys, if you would like for me just to look through it.
Bring it back to our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll go through and we'll get an estimate of what it would take to get it where there's no issues with it and we'll bring it back.
I know that you guys tried to use, tried to look at for used vehicles, didn't you?
Yes.
And they were as high as almost the new one was, that had about the same mileage, wasn't it?
Yeah, they tried looking for used ones, but they're expensive too. We had the Dodge Dakota we've been to trade in, we're going to get five thousand for that to Parks and Facilities, so we lost that money. But if you ever rode with him on the levees, you'd know. I've ridden with him before. And he is our emergency responder and he needs a vehicle that's dependable, so...
I think we can look at fixing this and see what, you know, what that's going to cost.
Okay.
Okay, so number one, we're going to bring it back to our next meeting. So number two?
Consider first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twelve dash four 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 seven by fixing the compensation for updated city positions.
Good evening. This is what we were talking about on a little bit of reorganization. As I hope that all of you are aware, Randy Jacobs, the current Public Services Superintendent, is retiring on September the twenty-eighth, which has provided us with some options in looking at the organizational structure of the Public Works Department, specifically the Public Services Division. What we are proposing is taking the Public Services Division and dividing it into two similarly sized, smaller divisions. One being street and stormwater, the other being sanitation. In doing so, we would eliminate the current Public Services Supervisor position that was over all of Public Services and create a street and stormwater supervisor position. There will be no financial impact to this. The person in the position would just go straight into the other position with no change in pay. We would also like to create, to eliminate the sanitation lead position and create a sanitation supervisor position. So you have supervisors over both of these new, similarly sized divisions. This would be a sanitation supervisor. There would be some financial impact of around fourteen hundred dollars a year, including benefits, because there would be a three percent increase at that time that the employee went into the position. We're also suggesting taking some of the Public Services Maintenance Worker positions, taking nine of them and creating four sanitation driver positions. People that would be in charge of the entire route, in charge of the truck and everything that goes on with that truck every day. Then we would also have sanitation collectors. Those would be the individuals behind who are actually picking up, picking up the refuse. The good thing about this is the driver positions provide people the opportunity for advancement and promotion and greater responsibility. And then the collector positions are also nice for people who may not want that greater responsibility, who may not want to drive that big truck, because some people don't. And it would also not require them to hold a C.D.L. driver's license. The financial impact of this would be around four thousand dollars a year to create drivers, benefits included. There would be no financial impact for the collectors because they would stay at the same rate as they are currently as Public Services Maintenance Workers.
Is that per driver or just four thousand for all?
That is for all of them for the year. So there will be actually no additional positions on the organizational chart created. We're just reorganizing and restructuring some to have more direct supervision over the individual divisions.
This is something I've been wanting to, well, something I've been looking at for probably four years. And finally, the opportunity has arisen where we can make some significant changes to both the divisions. My expectations are very, very high for these positions and for these supervisors. And so I, I'm expecting a lot out of both of them. And if they're able to perform the function, then that's great. And if they're not, we'll find somebody who can, just like with all the rest of our positions, so. But it's a good change, especially for the Public Services Maintenance Workers and being split. Because like Marla was saying, some of our individuals do not want C.D.L.s because they just don't want the responsibility. They just want to work and, you know, collect, collect trash, just like Victor.
Victor Crowe.
Victor, you did that for thirty-some years.
At least thirty-two years.
And so, and he never wanted to drive a truck, he was just happy with what he did. And he was actually the individual that trained almost all of the collectors at one time. He was, he was quite, quite the special individual. And so I think by having this change, it'll, it'll actually help boost morale in the department as well. And I think that you're going to see a lot more emphasis placed on them working harder and more efficiently. So I think it'll be a very positive change overall.
So if we're not going to replace Randy's position, so we'll have a savings in that area too, right?
That's correct. You'll have probably about a hundred thousand dollars worth of savings, maybe a little bit less. It's impacted in three different areas, sanitation, streets, and stormwater. What our hope is, is we're going to take a look at it and see, this may be a great opportunity to look at a mechanic, a full-time mechanic. It's also maybe a great opportunity to reevaluate where some of the other positions are as far as compensation-wise. So we have a lot of opportunities and a lot of options moving forward and...
It looks like to me if a mechanic, you know, with all the equipment and stuff we've got, that it's almost a must, you know, now to try to do it in-house, wouldn't it be?
Maybe, I mean, the tools, and the tools and the training are going to be quite expensive. And paying for a mechanic is going to be, to have one that has the qualifications that you're looking for is going, going to take something. Because all of our equipments, also, we have so many different types of equipment. And you have to have specialized certifications on some equipment and some other equipment you don't and...
Most of our things are warranted anyway to go back out to...
Correct, yeah. Yep, quite a few of them are. But we, it's something we're going to look at and see how it goes. But we have that opportunity potentially moving forward this, next year.
I will so approve, move that we approve the ordinance for the changes in Public Services.
Is this approved?
And approval ordinance, amending ordinance number two oh one seven dash twelve dash four four seven by fixing the compensation for updated city positions.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion on it? If not, it's a roll, roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Okay, may I approve?
Thank you.
Number three?
Upfront Personnel Policy, okay?
Okay, this is an interesting one. This has been worked on for some time with myself and the management team, Tamara Niles. We haven't updated that policy in some time, so it was time to really give it a good review. So I want to hit the highlights for you of the things that are material that have changed in the policy. First of all, we just included min, mid, and max. That's what's on the pay ordinance for the pay range.
Now, what is that?
Minimum is the minimum rate of pay. Mid is directly between maximum and minimum. And then maximum's the maximum rate of pay for any position on the pay ordinance. So we wanted to have those defined in there clearly. We also have done something that I think is very positive. And we have included call-outs on official holidays as premium pay eligible. What that means is premium pay is a time when employees are paid time and one-half the regular rate of pay for it, for work completed. They don't have to go into overtime to be eligible. So for example, yesterday, if someone would have been called out to work yesterday, it would have been regular, except for fire department, they get premium pay currently. They would have gotten regular compensation for the hours worked yesterday because the pay period had just begun and they had not yet worked forty hours to get into overtime status. This eliminates that and allows them, anytime they're called out on a holiday, to receive time and a half for those hours worked, no matter how many hours they work in the rest of the work week. So I think that's a very positive thing for the employees.
And what are we considering a holiday?
We have nine official city holidays. And that, that is what would be defined.
The nine official?
Official, yes.
Well, like yesterday, I think there was a guy out watering the plants and stuff, so he didn't fall into that?
If someone were actually called in to work, not if the regular...
Like if there was a main break or...
Okay, okay.
Emergency.
Some emergency that was brought up, that we had to call them in to work on, on an actual holiday.
So what about Sundays? What about...
No, not, not, not at this time in this policy.
Okay.
Just city holidays.
But we, we did feel good about adding this for them for holidays. Because I think, you know, when they go ahead and work the rest of the holiday week, but they've been called out on a holiday and it's still straight time because you're only scheduled thirty-two hours, and you don't get to forty to get to overtime status, it was kind of, you know, kind of made them feel badly. So we tried to, to change that.
And we have full-time employees working thirty-two hours a week?
Well, it would be for this week because of the holiday.
Okay, because of, because of the holiday.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So you said the fire department's different.
They receive premium pay for all of their call-outs at this time. Police department receives premium pay for some, depending upon the situation, like clicker ticket, DUI checkpoints. When police and fire work events such as rodeos, football games, the employees receive premium pay for those hours worked.
When they work a football game, they're not paid by the city, though. They're paid by the event holder, correct?
They're actually on the, on the clock with the city. The event holder pays the city because we...
Time and a half.
We, yeah, we set our rates. Because we have people who are using city equipment, some uniforms, and we're not actually on the clock. And we felt like with workers' compensation and just our rights, our responsibilities as an employer, is that they needed to be on the clock with us so they have all those protections. We'll just build that entity.
Okay.
Is the call-out on a volunteer basis where they can sign up or...
A lot of times it is. It's individualized between the departments and the divisions. But they all generally work together, the employees. And they can trade back and forth if there's a weekend that doesn't work for them. You know, they can make trades with each other. So it's all individualized for the departments and divisions. Sometimes call-outs are mandatory, you do need to come. But most of the time, it's who wants to come out.
Okay.
But this is only for city holidays, nine times a year?
Only for city holidays, that's right.
That's right.
Yeah. The next thing that we wanted to do is a large change, but it shouldn't have any financial impact. The, it's kind of hard to explain, but fire EMS and police can go by a Fair Labor Standards Act exemption called a seven-K exemption. They can get overtime in what's called a work period instead of a work week. So we had it to where it followed their schedule that they got overtime after twenty-seven days in a work period. It was two hundred and four hours, and this is, this is all legitimate by the FLSA and the Department of Labor. What we have done is we have changed that work period to match our payroll period so that they will actually receive their overtime compensation right along with the pay period in which it's earned. There was a lag when there were twenty-seven days because you paid the regular time in the payroll period and then you would have to wait and count twenty-seven days worth of overtime and then you would pay them their overtime. So what we're doing is just getting it to where their overtime is paid within the payroll period, just like everybody else. So, so it's not so far for them to plan out with, with when they're going to receive their overtime. So it, so it's not so far for them to plan out with, with when they're gonna receive their overtime. It is, it is complex, and I'm, I'm happy to talk to any of you about it anytime, if you want. Um, we incorporate a compensatory time for all city employees except fire and EMS. Twenty-four hours maximum for all employees except for police, and they have a sixty-hour maximum. This is a new thing, we haven't allowed uh, compensatory time for city employees, comp time, of course, for those of you that, if you don't know, it's when overtime is earned, say over forty hours in a work week, when overtime is earned, and a pu- a public employer can provide time off in the equivalent to the time and a half that the employee would have earned in compensation, in lieu of being paid for the t- for the overtime, they could take the time off at a later date. So we're incorporating this for all city employees except fire and EMS.
And how could they build that up, and how much could they reserve?
Okay, for all city employees except for the police department, and then the fire EMS department that doesn't get it, can accrue up to twenty-four hours, is what we determined. Police can accrue up to sixty hours.
Why is the difference?
Shortage.
Do I?
And I, I have looked with the Department of Labor, and police and fire generally can accrue by law up to four hundred and eighty hours, and all other employees by law can accrue up to two hundred and forty. So it just seems like it's systemically that way, that police and fire could accrue and accumulate more on the books.
So they can accrue twenty-four hours as a city employee?
Correct.
Are, uh, who makes the decision whether they're going to take the money or take the time?
The employee and along with the employer makes that decision. Generally, an employer can say, I am gonna give you compensatory time, but we don't normally do that. What I have seen is that employees request to have the compensatory time rather than to have the overtime payment, because they want to have that leave available for them on the books.
Yeah.
How long can they keep that time?
They can keep that time until they leave, and then it is paid out upon separation, and there's a formula which you have to follow for the Department of Labor. It's, I believe, the current regular rate of pay or the highest of the last three years.
Okay, so, this per year?
This just continues on, so they can have twenty-four hours at any given time.
So it, it doesn't accumulate?
It, it does, it just only when they earn overtime that they don't want paid for.
Yeah, but I mean, if they, if they want twenty-four hours of comp time, and they don't use it, do they have to use it every year is what I'm getting at?
No, they don't have to use it every year, just when they get to the, if they get to twenty-four point two five, we pay out the point two five on the next regular payroll check.
Okay, no. Okay.
So they never can go over.
So at some point, it becomes cash to them if they don't use it?
I think I understand.
That's right. Mm-hmm.
And you're saying the police department and fire department can accumulate up to sixty hours?
Well, the police department can, the fire department has elected not to utilize compensatory time.
Okay.
But the police department can accrue up to sixty hours, is what was decided in, in all of our lengthy discussions.
So, a regular employee can only do twenty-four hours and can't carry any over?
That's right.
Did they say why the fire department chose not to?
That, the fire department, and Bobby, you might help me.
Yeah, I'd uh, I think probably the biggest issue that we have is that, we have a minimum staffing that we have to uh, divide by, and minimum personnel on duty. Uh, the issue that we're looking at, running the figures, is that a lot of that compensation time, uh, we're gonna have to hire somebody back to fill those positions, so, I mean, it's kind of a wash, does that make sense?
Judge. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also on the, the uh, change, uh, the threshold on, on our overtime, normally, uh, most jobs, it's forty hour a week, ours is average fifty-six. So, uh, overtime doesn't hit us till after about fifty-six hours a week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey Chief, why is that, I mean, why are you going to fifty-six hours?
Well, that's what uh, the FLSA came with.
That comes together.
Twenty-four.
Hot.
In that, uh, that's through the Fair uh, Language Council.
Twenty-four times, three.
Okay, that's what they, okay.
They have a chart, one for police and one for fire, and it says how many hours and what day period.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, yep. The next thing that we i- uh, changed was including court pay, because Chief Ward wanted police officers who had to come in on their day off to go to court to at least get a two-hour minimum, instead of coming in, clocking in, and then for some reason, maybe the defendant doesn't show up, and they're out of here in ten minutes, and they've taken their time out of their own day, or driven back from Ponca City, or whatever they had to do to get to court. So he wanted them to make sure to get a two-hour minimum, and then of course.
And we just move court. And I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm saying, if you're gonna have officers required to testify, and we just have a day where they're.
They don't have a specific, the individual who is being prosecuted and the officer is called be a witness.
Right.
They have no idea whether he's gonna show up or not, but they know they have to show up at court, so when the person that's being prosecuted doesn't, a lot of times the attorney doesn't know until the court time.
And that's what's, yeah, that's what's happening.
Right, but that's, that's what I'm saying is, you make it all on a specific day if they're going to be jury trials.
Well, we, well, they deal with day they're, they, they know what day they're coming in.
Or not jury, you're dead.
Well, not, not all of those jury trial, there, there's a lot of cases that happen on Tuesday from municipal court,
Right.
and then every other day of the week upstairs in district court, uh, they have their docket set they run, but until like, uh, Karen said, until the defendant shows up at two o'clock when they're supposed to be there, they don't know if the court's gonna go. We had one last week where they called the officers in, they got here fifteen minutes early, they get upstairs, two o'clock, defendant no show, they send them home. So I mean, they just took the time out of their day, and one of them doesn't live in town, one of them lives out of town, so it took over, well over an hour of their time to get ready and come into court and then go back home for nothing. And we're just asking to try to make it fair for them, that they take the time out of their day off to come in. A lot of times, the prosecution has been working well with us, and trying to get notifications out to us, they think the court's not gonna go, but they also try to schedule quite a bit of it where it happens quite often that where the officer's on duty actually, when they have to go to court, so.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's, they try that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
It's, it's just really difficult to know what's gonna happen upstairs with the docket, what's gonna happen with the defense attorney and the defendant all put together with the prosecution, it, it, it's kinda hectic.
So is it, is it, is it not very often that they have to come in on their days off, they try more to do it on days on?
Yes.
They, yeah, it's, it happens more, but I mean, we still have a lot that at times, I mean, every week that there's court, uh, in municipal court on Tuesday, there's always gonna be somebody off, I mean, it just happens every Tuesday, but the other times are usually, the, the best thing that they have done for us right now is actually
Right.
helping us out, they've scheduled more district court in the afternoons, 'cause the officers have to work nights, go home at six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. There's a lot of times in the past, we'd have to be back in court at nine o'clock in the morning, so.
Right.
Uh, but they try to do, they try to work with us quite a bit, so, it's just something that happens, unfortunately, it happens often that we get an officer that has to get ready, come in, and then they find out last minute.
Same, municipal court, we rarely bring them in, I mean, it's, it's not very often.
Well, we do, but we just had a trial where the defendant did not show.
And.
Yeah.
Officer was here for.
But it doesn't happen very often, he's not saying it, I mean.
No, we don't bring them in that often, really. We try to do it when they're on duty too, but.
It just depends.
It's something you can't predict.
Just depends.
Right.
It's just really something you can't predict.
So you're just saying on the, on the chance that they get called in on their days off, that this would be a compensation for them?
Yes.
And it's not always in our district court, sometimes they have to go ahead and drive to Winfield.
Yeah, there's times that we, one of them in Winfield too, for jury trials before the, or happen in Winfield, and there's times usually though, if you go up for a jury trial in Winfield, you're usually sitting there all day.
So it's our case, it's just up in Winfield?
Yes, that's, that's the only place that's double juries in Kansas City.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Captain. And then the final change was we also wanted to have interpreter pay, in case an employee had to come in on their day off and interpret for us, be it in court or at the police department, if they would do that, they would get a minimum of two hours compensation. If it takes longer than two hours, then they get additional compensation. It was a way to reward those that are providing interpreter uh, services for us.
Are they certified? In court, they have to be certified to be an interpreter?
You would have to tell me, Leslie. We in court, we do have a certified interpreter come on a specific day.
Right.
Okay, so this, this may not be just in court, this may be just at the police department and when they need help.
Yeah, we have one employee that's fluent in Spanish, uh, he has come in to help with investigations and things like that when needed, and that was something that Chief wanted to do, just kind of make a little bit more for him, because uh, we just have no one, so.
And that's not something they can do interdepartmental? Where they pay him through the department, that's something that needed to come through payroll?
If he's going to be working, I think that it probably should definitely go through payroll. I, I don't think we can treat them as an independent contractor, we, I think we would need to treat them as an employee.
Well, I mean, I understand there'd be an employee, but he would be calling his own employee in and paying him. Right, he'd clock in, and he gets paid for how long he's there.
Right, and he, and he would be. The only thing with this is he calls him in to do this interpreting for us, and he gets a minimum of two hours. That's all we're asking here, is that he gets a minimum of two hours for doing it. He, he gets paid as an employee doing it one way or the other, but this just gives him a minimum of two hours.
That doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
She doesn't understand.
Yeah, she just.
Well, I understand, what I'm saying is, it's his department. If they call him in to work in that department, which is his department, and his supervisor's called him in to work on a case, then he clocks in, and if they need him fifteen minutes, he clocks out. What you're saying is, you want him to be paid two hours whether he's there fifteen minutes or thirty minutes?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's about the only way you're gonna get an interpreter.
It's no different than calling him out to court, and the defendant not showing up. We're taking time out of his day off, him in and helping us in the investigation.
Does he, is he required to come in?
I guess we would, I think, I know, yes, I know.
Well, when you call him in, I think so.
No, he wouldn't be required to come in. No, you couldn't require him to come in necessarily.
Do you still maintain a list of individuals?
We do have a very small list right now compared to what we've had in the past as far as interpreters, especially ones that are certified to go into the court.
You just have one, right?
I don't know right now.
Okay, I thought, I'm sorry.
Uh, we have a few that we use, I just don't know that who are certified and who are not. But a lot of times we use them just for not mainly investigations, if we use somebody for investigations, we usually use, uh, the savers or we use, uh, our officer.
Sometimes it's just for interview, just getting information.
Yeah.
So.
And, and how many times, Mark, do you think that you would call somebody in, in a paid period? I mean, is there, is there?
It's not, it, it's not that often.
It's not that often, okay, that's what I'm getting at, so it's not something that's going to just blow your budget completely out of?
No. No, I don't, I don't believe it will, no. I mean, we've been paying interpreters for, probably for the part of a decade at least.
You have been?
Yeah.
That come in to the department?
I would have to say probably, uh, I don't know about the court, but I mean, almost with the inception of uh, Fairland processes, I don't think there ever were, we were paying interpreters.
Okay.
Well, I'd, I think it's well worth the two hours paid for having somebody come in on their day off, whether it's to interpret or go to court. It's a day off, if they have a day off and call them in, you only need fifteen minutes, you're paying fifteen minutes, that's not worth coming in. So I agree that two hours is not that much, to pay for one of our employees was to court or to interpret, whatever. So, I see no problem with two hours, minimum.
Are you gonna make a motion?
I shall. We're looking back to the.
Personnel policy update.
I so move that we approve the personnel policy update to, for all the changes that have been described.
I second.
Okay, is there any more discussion on it? Been moved and seconded, it's a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Number four.
Hold a public hearing and consider a resolution to authorize the city to apply for community development block grant to replace water lines in Sleeth Edition.
The uh, the grant requires that we have a certified administrator, which is mentioned through the contract, South Central Kansas Economic Development District, and our certified administrator is Casey Tillman, so I'll turn it over to Casey.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I've been working with Mike and the city on developing a grant application for a waterline project on the Sleeth Edition, and as part of that community development block grant, uh, process, we're required to hold a public hearing, um, and accept public comment on that. And so, we would ask right now that we open a public hearing for the purpose of discussing a proposed project to replace approximately eleven thousand linear feet of deteriorated eight-inch water lines, thirty-seven valves, and twenty-eight outdated fire hydrants in the Sleeth Edition, uh, for total project cost right now of nine hundred and ninety thousand and ninety dollars. Um, worth our grant request is gonna be five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, with a city match of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Well, I'll go ahead and ho- hold a public hearing. Is there any comment from the public? If not, I'll close the hearing and.
Following that public hearing, what we're going to be, uh, considering are two resolutions. Um, the first one certifies the legal authority to apply to the Kansas Department of Commerce for twenty nineteen, Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, again, we're gonna be asking for five hundred and sixty, dot, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the first resolution also authorizes the mayor to sign off on the uh, auxiliary signature documents of the application. There's a disclosure report, and an anti-dislocation relocation plan, and then a certification that will s- uh, that's a list of rules that will follow if they were to grant funds. The second resolution is one, um, certifying that we'll continue to maintain the portion of the water system that's, uh, rehabilitated with community development block grant funds.
Now Nick, where's that money coming from, I mean?
Water fund, our portion come out of the water fund. Yeah, we're estimating about a million dollars worth of water line improvements for next year is what we're shooting for, so this project could take about a half a million of that, four hundred and some thousand, if awarded. If not, um, if we don't receive the grant funds for this project, we'll actually incorporate more into the Meek Island area, and try to get that done and reapply again for this project probably next year again, so.
And when's that, uh, that, when's that coming up, and when will they vote on it, or I mean, when they, let us know whether we got it or not?
October's usually when they make the announcements, I believe.
The applications actually due at the end of this month, the twenty-eighth, and then, um, they'll announce awards in January, mid-January-ish,
January, yeah.
and then, uh, it awarded a grant, and we'll actually sign a contract with the state in March.
Can you explain to me what you meant about Meek Island, uh, the money? We've been working on Meek, Red Meek Island for a long time.
Okay. Right. We, we only have so much money to go towards water lines, and so, what we estimated was a million dollars for twenty nineteen for water line improvements. Um, if we're awarded a grant.
Just, just in that, just in Sle- Sleeth or both?
Both.
Okay.
Both projects, so if we do receive grant funds, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand will go to Sleeth Edition. If not awarded, then that money's gonna go to Meek and Island area, and we'll just reapply for the Sleeth if on year.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we talked about that with.
It all needs done, but from a priority wise, um, from the C W G perspective, we have a higher possibility of getting
Yeah. So. Getting money?
The Sleeth money, for, money for Sleeth Edition.
Okay.
Um, and it's, a lot of it's due to just the, um,
Location.
the location, and also the, the demographics of, of the system, and so, um, it's a, hopefully we get to do both next year, some of both, but for sure, we're gonna be doing Meek and Island a portion of it next year, so.
Okay.
Regardless of, of how this ends up.
Yeah, on that Sleeth Edition, we get that, will that do the whole Sleeth?
Yes, all but maybe like a, a few blocks, which, which is the old blocks that are near where the ball fields were.
Okay.
I mean, there's no one around there anyway, so it's not gonna impact any residents.
Okay.
Fine.
My aunt used to live there.
Do what, yeah?
Um, what do you? So we've already have the public.
So what we need to, we need to prove the resolution. So what we need to, we need to approve the resolution, certify the legal authority first.
Okay.
And then secondly, it's a resolution, uh, that the funds are gonna be, can provide, uh, for the operation and maintenance of the improvement, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we consider a re- a resolution certifying the legal authority apply for the two thousand nineteen Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CDVG program for the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing, uh, Mayor Dan Jerkovic to sign and submit such a, uh, application.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Then I, on B, I, I make a motion, we consider a r- a resolution, uh, assuring the Kansas Department.
Huh?
You what?
I have to, I'm sorry, ma'am, uh, Vice Mayor, to approve the, to apply for the block grant and then certify and then assure. So I don't think we have a motion and a second unless we both missed it. The four and then four A and four B.
Yeah. Oh, four, four A and then four B.
Oh, I thought it was just four A.
I thought it was four A and four B.
No, it's, there's three different resolutions.
Okay, move back to four.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's to hold a public hearing is what you're probably?
Yes, yeah, and then.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we hold a public hearing.
Well, it's authorized, it's, it's a resolution authorized in the city to apply for CDVG funds for Sleuth Edition.
Okay. Huh?
Say so, move.
So move.
I thought he already did that.
Yeah, I thought he did.
Well, you did.
He read, he read that, did he not say it correctly?
No, this, this is a different resolution, so.
Okay, where is it?
It's on four.
Just four?
And then four A and then four B.
I thought it was those four.
Need a second?
Second.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, four B.
Okay.
Okay.
He did four B.
I'll do.
I so moved that we approve the resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to our Kansas City water system to be financed with community development box, block grant funds.
I second.
Okay.
Did we get that one right?
Should we do that one?
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion on that one? If not, it's a voice vote, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think he explained it very well, thank you.
We're not always like this.
The mayor's gone, you know, we're handicapped.
Yeah, the mayor's gone. Okay, number five.
Consider a resolution declaring the eligibility of the city to submit an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for the use of transportation alternative funds for the hike bike trail extension program and authorizing the mayor to sign the grant.
This is just one resolution. Under, under, uh, map twenty-one, which I looked up, stands for Moving Ahead for Progress in Twenty-One, Twenty-First Century Act, which was signed by President Obama in twenty twelve, uh, a hundred and five billion dollars for funding of service transportation. Under this, the transportation alternative Kansas has seven million dollars that was, can use to apply for the hike bike trail extension. So.
Boy, that would be a great high five trail.
Yeah, well, we have a unique opportunity, um, that is, um, being negotiated right now. West Star is looking at, um, doing a new transmission line, and they need right-of-way access. And of course, we have all the right-of-way that they need, every last bit of it, and so I'll actually come up here. I'll show you.
Oh, boy, new toy.
Okay, so there is the Paris Park Substation, which is right here. And they're gonna be redoing that substation. And also with that redoing that substation, they're going to put a high transmission line all the way to Canvac and all the way to Mill. We have all the right-of-way that they need, every last piece of it, from transmission to there, which saves them a tremendous amount of money going through legal process, so on and so forth. What I requested from the very beginning is that they pay us for the hike bike from here to basically Sleuth. That they pay for that portion.
The red, the red?
From, from here, where the, the trail ends now, all the way to Hafner Sports Complex.
Yeah, the red.
You pay for that trail and in turn, we will, um, give you the right-of-way.
What's the distance on that trail, that, that part of it?
Where down?
How long is it?
How long?
It, it is over, it's bright, just shy of a mile, I believe is where it is.
Okay.
The estimate, which includes a crossing on Madison, is five hundred and, oh, yeah, but I'll show you. It's five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. But we're in negotiations, uh, with them right now, um, on that number. Uh, we've thrown s- s- some numbers out there, but they haven't given us any no's yet. They wanna pay us by the end of this year too. So, um, also part of this project, uh, the transmission line project, there were, we have to relocate a water line that's, uh, that is in this area. We're in negotiations with them too, to either move the water line, um, or relocate the water line around Canvac. And so we're looking at two options, we, we don't know which one we're gonna go with yet, we just need to visit with, with them and get that done. But, uh, we'll be requesting funds, um, to match that portion of the cost. There's also, um, some opportunity, uh, in our master trail, uh, program, uh, that was adopted way back in the early two thousand, I believe. It showed the hike bike trail actually going along the levee all the way back around, um, to, well, uh,
Poplar?
Yeah, all the way back to Poplar. So going on the levee, all the way back to the Mill Road, going along Madison, and then getting back into Deewer or Poplar. Uh, that's the, the green, the O's plan, that was approved years and years and years ago. But what this project will do, and what we're applying for funds are, there's two separate things. There's like an option A and option B. Option A is the purple one, um, option B is, is, well, option A, which is the purple, will complete the trail, so that'll get us the rest of the way around.
Do we have this on?
Option, the, the green portion on yours will actually build a pedestrian overpass over Summit Street to keep all the pedestrians both out of traffic. And as you can see on that, it's nine hundred thousand dollars to put that over. A large portion of that is for the dirt work and the wean walls and all those improvements. The actual bridge itself will look exactly like the one that goes over West Madison, and it's about a hundred eighty-eight thousand, I think is what's on there, or just the bridge portion. But that's, that's just a small portion of the bridge. But what that allows us is that opens that up to, we can do those later phases. So what we're asking for is basically approval to apply for these grant funds. Um, it's an eighty-twenty project, so we have to have at least twenty percent match. Our match is going to be the eighty-seven thousand dollars from the college, plus the money that we get, the four to five hundred thousand plus that we'll receive from West Star, so that'll be our match. And so our goal is to have basically no, nothing out of pocket, um, if possible, which would be great, 'cause honestly, then we could have this whole trail left for zero.
So wait, the, the whole trail itself is what, over two miles or three miles?
Yeah, it'd be about two miles of trail.
Okay.
Is what it ends up being, just, I think it's a little bit shy of two miles, some additional trail. But the whole trail combined, I think it's almost five miles.
Is that gonna be enough, Ken?
Uh.
Well, like I said, with that pedestrian overpass, then that opens up for us to eventually go back around and connect back to our other trails. Um, so we, it's just a lot of opportunity there, and I think we should apply for it. They get award, other cities, one point two, two billion before in years past, so it's not unusual for them to do that.
So with the pedestrian overpass, uh, is, there's not one until you get down to, uh, the south?
There's only one overpass.
Well, I mean, the, the proposed one.
Will be over here, right off the, um,
Right off the south?
Right off the bridge.
Okay.
The levee and the bridge. So what I'll do is, you'll have trail that goes back in, back this way, and then I'll cut across and then I'll go back down.
Okay.
So you actually have no act grade for pedestrian.
Well.
Because we're really concerned about pedestrians crossing there, just 'cause it's gonna be dangerous.
Well, the reason I was asking, 'cause we're half an inch down where Van?
Right there.
Okay, right there. I, I was kinda wondering if you had, uh, some way for them to get across there, other than the overpass. Would there be pedestrian crossings where stops?
There'll be no pedestrians on Summit Street, if the bridge is allowed, because then you eliminate that.
Okay.
So they'll have to walk all the way down the bridge and walk over.
Yes, and just a small, small ways there.
Yeah, those, they'll have to walk a little bit farther south and cross and then come back up.
Well, I'm kinda worried about people that won't.
And they're probably, right, option A includes the act grade crossing and signal. The, the second one, the green one, actually is, is the bridge, so.
Okay. I just.
You'll have to have a signalized crossing.
Well, that, that.
You'll have to have parkers and signals if you do that grade.
I think it's just.
That's what I was kinda wondering of, 'cause I know, I may not know everybody, but I'm pretty sure a lot of them will just cut across Summit Street to get that.
They do already, unfortunately.
Yeah. And so I was kinda wondering, 'cause
But if we give them the opportunity.
But what would we do to increase that?
We can look at it and have it added.
Add it?
If we give them an opportunity to use the bridge.
And these are just preliminary numbers too, I mean, those are things they're gonna have to go through the process, and there's, I think there's actually three phases in the selection process and the funding process, so it's something, this is just kinda phase one for it, but like I said, to complete the whole.
Well, let's submit the application, so it'll be cut.
And then we go from there, but really, the, the funds for this pedestrian overpass, what that does is opens up the rest of it.
Mm-hmm.
And we can look at the act grade crossing too.
I, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm all for that overpass thing, but I just think that maybe we oughta look ahead and think.
I think it's sixteen grade, it's on that option actually already.
Yeah, I see that.
So what we do is, we'd actually subtract that out of there, so in the purple section, you see highway crossings, markings, markings, signage of sixteen grand, you, that would actually come out, or we can leave it in there. So even if you approve that total amount for the grant application,
Mm-hmm.
then we'll be fine.
I just think we'd be better off, we just left it in.
Yeah, and it's, it's in there, it's in there, the total amount includes that, sixteen grand.
Traffic control, I think.
What's your Madison crossing gonna look like on the left?
Signalized, it'll have to, yeah, have to be a push button with lights to stop them.
But is that in the purple one?
Yeah, that is, that's in the blue one, actually, because that's in a part of the phase of West Star.
Okay, I see, right.
So the phase where we're gonna try to do is the nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand?
Actually, what I think we're going to put in there, total project cost will be two million one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
And our, our portion that we're going to look at, um, is in that five thirty-seven, three ninety-five.
This isn't a given, this is an application.
Okay.
This is the application, this is not a given though.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we do know we're gonna do our best to try to get that completed, whether we're awarded the funds or not, we're gonna try our best.
It'd be a waterfall. It'd be a waterfall thing for the people, I tell you, you know.
If you ever, if you haven't been on the trail, it can's perfect for, for, to, to just tell how many people use it. I mean, there's days that I go out there and there's thirty, forty people that seem to be in that whole length between.
You're gonna have to hit the center line.
I know. I, I wonder about that with my bike, because you've got so many people with their ear pods in, you know, the earphones on, and you gotta almost yell at them to tell them they're coming by.
Their community really uses that.
They do.
They're down there every evening until dark, there's a lot of people walk there.
And honestly, the, the one thing that's really surprised me is this central, um, uh, little park area here. How many people go down there and, and just hang out now. I mean, we have quite a few people who use it.
And somebody's keeping that clean, I'm kinda proud of them.
Well, I think that's us, isn't it, Tony?
Yeah, yeah, but Trance Robinson, sanitation department.
But it, I, it looks nice, I, I haven't seen it bad, it, it looks nice.
Well, I'll make a motion, we consider a resolution declaring the eligibility of the city of our Kansas City, Kansas, to submit a application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for the use of the transportation alternative funds set forth by map dice twenty-one for the hike and bike trail extension project and authorizing Dan, uh, Mayor Dan Jerkovic to sign the grant application.
I second that. Jacob.
I know.
He will comply.
That's right.
I'll second, or did you do it?
Karen seconded.
Okay.
Is there another discussion on it? It's a voice vote, if not, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number six.
Select three voting delegates to the Lake of Municipalities Annual Business Meeting.
Okay, um, it's coming up, October sixth through the eighth of October. It's in Topeka this year, who would like to attend? Truly what comes down to.
Well, Kevin Fevers is seventh, so I can't go.
I know, and I probably won't be able to go either if Kevin Fevers on the seventh, I don't wanna miss it.
Karen won't go? Uh, Kevin Fever, huh?
Oh. She's got Kevin Fever, too.
You going Kevin Fever too?
You don't know?
Mike, would I have to be going by myself?
Karen gonna go here, don't you?
I would be there till Sunday, so.
I've got, I've got.
You got something to come? Oh, gosh.
Dwayne and, where's Dan?
Well, I have one, probably go, maybe?
I'm, I may not go either.
Okay, all right, well, let's still pick three delegates and we'll go from there.
Well, since Stan's not here, he'd be.
Perfect candidate.
Or a perfect candidate.
So with Dan, Dwayne, and?
Cal, cut me down.
Okay, Karen has an alternate, or is the third one an alternate?
No, third one's third.
Passed for three, I think, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I'll make a motion, we elect, uh, Dan, Dwayne, and Karen for the, uh, the voting delegates to Lake of Municipalities Annual Business Meeting, uh, October the sixth through the eighth. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, under, uh, manager updates, healthcare, sales tax ballot due?
Uh, yes, um, as of today, Andrew checked on this, so they've had two thousand one hundred and sixty of them returned, um, which include those that, um, were unvoted on?
Undeliverable.
Undeliverable, unvoted, um, and out of fifty-one hundred that were actually mailed. What was the number, three hundred, was that the number, that was undeliverable?
It was over four hundred.
Four hundred? So fifteen hundred?
Well, the last time I heard, it was three hundred, but it might have been up to four hundred. Okay.
So quite a few. And they have till September sixth at noon to turn it in. Um, at this point, honestly, if you're going to vote, um, it's probably best that you just hand deliver it to the courthouse uh, to ensure that your vote is counted that day. Uh, they've, I guess there've been some issues with the post office, and so they're wanting to make sure that that doesn't, um, have any effect on it.
Last B and by noon Thursday, right?
That's correct, and they'll start counting at noon, um, on Thursday, and by two o'clock, we should know the results, two, two-thirty.
Okay.
Um, other items, um, November seventh through the tenth is National League of Cities. I'm planning on attending that, who would like to go for that?
Is that the one you told us, apparently?
Yeah, that's the one that I told you about, and honestly, all you can go, it's not an issue, uh, from an open meetings perspective. Um, because there is exemptions for these meetings, uh, these national meetings. Looking at the, uh, agenda and the different classes, it is, looks really good. I mean, it looks like some really substantive, um, topics, um, and we'll probably leave the sixth, um, because it starts, uh, the afternoon of the seventh, and there's actually clo- classes the morning of the seventh as well, like some pre-conference classes. And then it ends on the tenth, um, in, in the afternoon. I don't know if we can get to the plane on the tenth, um, but it'll probably be the eleventh is when we'll return.
Where is it this year?
Los Angeles.
Okay.
So if you'd like to go, just let me know here, probably within the next week or two.
Okay.
If you'd like to, and so I can make sure we get plane tickets and all that.
Do you have a, do you have a thing of, what kinda, what they're gonna be, classes and stuff?
Yeah, I can send it to you, I'll email it to you, probably, and you can email it to you, so we'll get it to you.
Okay.
All right, okay. Need to know in a, what, week?
Yeah, a week. Yeah, a week would be good, so I can get plane tickets reserved, cause it's just gonna keep going up in price the longer we wait. Um, other item, um, really my final item is, well, two, uh, moderate income housing grant. We've had conversation earlier on in regards to the housing subdivision. Um, we are making application for that one, again, for amount of four hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't require all the CDBG craziness. It just, uh, requires us to support the project, which we have vocally several times. And that four hundred thousand will be used for infrastructure improvements, road, water, sewer, um, and it's for fifty-four units, I believe, is how many housing units. It's a workforce housing, three bedroom, two bath, one car garage. And so, uh, we'll be making application for that. And then the final item is the Agribusiness Building. We need to have some discussion on that thing. Um, Tony's been working in there and, uh, we're redoing, uh, we redid the ceiling in the restrooms and the lights, and we're making it a little bit more ADA friendly, put new sinks in. Uh, we were out in the hallway working on the ceiling tile in the hallway, or in the foyer area, and we found some, uh, mildew in a few spots. So we replaced the, we're in the process of replacing the paneling in that main room, in the lights and the, in the ceiling tile. Um, the roof is working good. I think they had one small area, maybe.
Yes, we had one small leak.
One small leak with all the rain that we've had. Um, but we've already contacted them to get that taken care of, and so they'll get that fixed. Otherwise, the ceiling fans are in and operational, and they will, they, they really move a lot of air. Uh, the new heating units are in. Um, between those two improvements, it's gonna, well, the third improvements are lighting. We're putting new lights, uh, LED lighting in there. Uh, that's going to, uh, reduce our electric footprint in there substantially, between the heating, the LED, um, and, uh, the insulation, the roof and the fans. I mean, I was in there the other day when it was ninety-plus degrees. When those fans were on, it felt nice in there. I mean, you could actually work in there and, and accomplish something. But what we're wanting to do now is twofold. We wanna look at skinning the walls with metal. Um, it's going to be expensive if we hire it done. Um, looking at the range of ninety to a hundred thousand dollars to put metal on the roof and the, and the walls. Uh, the second item we wanna discuss, which is going to upset some people, is, um, getting rid of tennis courts in there and actually going to a concrete surface, uh, where it's easier to maintain. Um, it'll be a lot more durable, uh, for a lot longer. Um, and the usage for the facility will probably go up because it won't look as bad. It'll be easier to clean. Um, Tony, come up here and explain, I mean.
Tony, does the Tennis Association still have?
Let's see, I'm jotting down a bunch of questions for you.
Tennis Association, they have, I think they said four thousand dollars in their account, um, uh, but they haven't paid for two years. They haven't paid anything in, into it. They don't pay for usage of the courts. The high school or the college doesn't pay for usage whatsoever. Uh, they have keys and they willy-nilly just go in whenever they feel like it. Um, they don't.
Yes, a lot of times they leave the building unlocked.
So, they let, they do private lessons in there. They do a lot of different things that, um, really detract.
But we don't have any formal contract with them?
No.
No.
No. There's no formal contract or agreement with them. And we don't have any policies in regards to it.
Does the college use it at all?
The college uses it, yes.
Do we have a contract with them?
A lot?
No.
No.
Well, why not?
That's why we're gonna discuss it.
Talk about discussing it.
Why would they want a contract when they can use it for free at any given time?
Cause Tony will be at the door.
Yeah. The college has said that they'd be willing to pay for their usage, um, a portion of their, you know, a portion of the cost for the, for utilization, but honestly, their utilization's gonna be hit and miss. They'll only use it when it's, when it's not nice outside. Um, so we don't know when that is.
Well, they'll use it in winter time.
And the high school will be the same way. They'll only use it when, and the middle school.
Correct. So it's one of those items that it just needs to be discussed, because I think we could get the utilization of the building up substantially if we remove it, and the cost of the maintenance of the facility would go down. Um, and Tony, because if you've been in there, and we probably should go in there and look, um, the courts are getting in pretty rough shape. They need redone if they're going to remain as tennis courts. The other problem we have is they tear everything up. Um, the air tennis balls that go and hit the ceiling and cause all the holes in there, and the walls that are all bent up and mashed. That, a large majority of all that was done by the Tennis Association over the years, and tennis players.
I was just learning. Goodness, give me a break.
Um, and honestly, if there wouldn't, wasn't all the holes in the ceiling and the insulation, we probably wouldn't need to do anything with the roof. I mean, but it looks so darn bad.
It sounds to me like this is something we just need to say stops.
And, but that's something we need to discuss, cause you're gonna have probably, everyone who plays tennis that.
Same way with the golf course.
That wants it. They may want, maybe they'll miraculously come up with money to pay for the courts, who knows? But, uh, I doubt it.
How much, how much, what say? What's, what's the courts gonna cost?
Well, they need redone. They need stripped completely off and redone.
So what, what would that cost, Tony, or do you know?
Uh, I think we had the ones down at Paris Park here recently. They stripped them completely down and repainted and re-marked the courts. I think they were around thirty-five hundred dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, the problem is, these courts are way bigger than Paris, that it's a lot bigger building than just those courts.
Yeah, it's a lot.
How about you get with them, Nick, and tell us what their thoughts are, what they would, willing to contribute or not?
They'll, they'll pay, they'll pay a per-usage fee, the college will, but they don't have any money to pay for courts.
What?
Well, they can pay per usage.
They don't have any money to pay for resurfacing the courts. Like I said, there's only four thousand in the, uh, indoor tennis association. There's an outdoor tennis association and an indoor tennis association. An indoor tennis association has.
Could you bring us a presentation for the next meeting from everybody?
Well, I, I think what we need to do is have a work session on it. I'm just, just talking out loud. And bring all the entities in and just sit down and just talk it over and see if they're willing to put anything up or whatever, just discuss it.
My thoughts are, with the tennis courts in the Ag building, you're restricting all your functions you can have in there. You can't dance on that floor. It stains, it holds.
It stains, milk.
Milk, oil, all that stuff. You strip those courts off, do what we're trying to do right now. We did a sample area today with, um, grinding down the concrete, sealing it, and then putting a clear coat over the top of it. Oil won't soak into it, milk won't soak into it, gasoline, nothing.
Let me ask you this, Chris.
You have pictures of it?
I do have some.
Let me ask you this question, Tony. What about going to the, to a cement floor at tennis?
That's, well.
That's what we're doing, but you still gotta mark the courts.
Don't you have cement floor in there now?
Yeah.
Slip and slide.
This is cement floor now.
It's cement in there now, yeah.
No.
No, it's tennis, it's tennis flooring.
Except for the corner, except for the courts.
It's a rubberized flooring.
Oh, well, I thought there was concrete in there.
So you don't make tennis.
Well, these, this is an opinion of how they're processing the floor now.
We did a small corner.
Yeah.
Just to see how difficult it'd be in, in what it looks like.
We're going down to the college aggregate.
Boy, that, that's just concrete that's underneath it, that padding.
Yeah.
Well, that's fundamental. Concrete's underneath it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, see, we're going down to the college aggregate on it.
No, I can't see anything, actually.
You got a picture of the aggregate when you're done? I saw you take a picture of it.
I got all videos of it.
I thought you did a picture.
What do you wanna do, Tony? What do you wanna do?
We have pause for a second.
I thought, but just stop it. You stopped it.
Well, that's, that'd be a lot of work to do all that, but, I mean, it's probably worth it.
They said three or four days is all it'd take them to do the whole court.
The whole court?
Yeah.
To strip it all off and coat it.
Here's one.
Well, how often do they use, how, okay.
They probably only do it once every twenty years.
I love that.
No, I mean, how often does tennis indoor tennis use the building?
Whenever the weather's bad, and whenever they feel like it.
Whenever they feel like it. They come and go.
And in winter times, you know.
Yeah. I mean, just the surface. I've already talked to Debbie Davison, and honestly, for her, it's, it's a lot cleaner.
That was my thoughts.
It'd be easier for her to clean, because they scrub and scrub and scrub on those floors and they can't get them cleaned.
They use a what, sixty days in the summer?
They use, no, they use it four months out of the year.
Well, four months?
Yeah, three, four months out of the year. They use it. Um, they're, they're our biggest user.
And that's.
So. Yeah.
And she would, they would benefit the most from it, because cleaning, um, and all their events and everything they do inside would be fine. The car show would actually be in better shape, because, um, this floor is easy to clean. Uh, for any user, you can use a push broom now to clean it up, rather than having to scrub it with a big scrubber. Um.
Same way with our colo.
Nick, you got a question? I mean, that, that sounds, yeah.
From there, you have to clean it all over your courts. You can't get out.
Well, you're making it just more tennis than anything, it sounds to me, um.
Yeah.
And that's what.
Just tennis.
Just because the tennis courts are in there, we're restricted to what we can do. And if we, if we get rid of those courts, we can open it up to everything.
I think that's a good idea, so.
I think the utilization would go up, honestly, of it.
I think that's a good idea, cause.
And with the improvements on the side of it, we don't have to worry about tennis rackets being put up against the side of it. We don't have to worry about the tennis balls, the lights. We don't have to have the grates across them to protect them from any flying objects up there.
Yeah, they're thirty dollars a light.
Yeah.
Light fixture for those three.
Was it, was that price you quoted, the, uh, total amount for the skin inside?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we'll address that here when we get some different bids and stuff.
I mean, was that just a guess?
That, that was a, that was a good guess at the time.
It was a rough guess, very rough, but anyway. Um, what we're looking at is the difference between just putting metal up and having metal hanging up there to a finished product is what our high-end bid was. We're talking trim work and everything dressed up nice to wear. It's not a barn look, but it's more of a home style, modern building look, you know?
It looks like a, yeah, with the steel paneling and everything.
And to get the citizens something, you know, to be proud of.
I, I'm telling you, if we get, if, if, and Kathy and I are gonna be looking at some numbers and some conscious figures. But if we can get these, if we can get the floor done, and we can get the walls done, and, and with everything else that we've already done, then people are gonna want to be in that building. They really will. They wanna rent it. They wanna be in there. It's something they're definitely be very proud of. Cause right now, it's just so grungy and dark and it just.
We could have an art craft show there because of that.
Yeah.
We quit holding the senior dance down there, because they can't dance on the floor.
Yeah.
And it's just not applicable for our seniors.
Well, Jay mentioned a work session. When could we have a work session with some cost?
When you get some more bids and costs, and we gotta look at numbers, so, probably a couple of weeks, probably.
Let's, let's plan on doing a work session on a Friday and then.
We'll come down and look at it anytime. Just let us know.
Sure. Are you, uh, are you gonna work on the floors more, or are you gonna wait?
We've got the test area exposed.
What I think we'll do is we'll have the study session at the Ag building.
Okay.
So that way we can go through and show you all the areas.
On Friday?
Yeah, let's do, let's, um, look at.
Well, that's my comp time off. Can't come Friday.
Whatever. You can take a Monday off.
You get paid, you get paid overtime.
Did I, did I mention that those are, those are?
You only, you only get twenty-four hours, so.
Let's do the twenty-first at noon.
Okay.
At the Ag building.
Bring your tennis rackets.
That's not the car show weekend. The car show weekend is last weekend.
Yeah, it's twenty-eighth is the car show. Twenty-eighth is. Isn't it?
I don't know.
Is it twenty-first?
Yeah.
Women on Target is twenty.
Does it start the Friday?
Well, they're in there Friday.
We still have a meeting, can't we?
No, I, I'll be setting up.
It'd be close.
Well, then you'll be there already.
They start moving.
It's only gonna take an hour, for us.
Yeah, I know, but it's gonna be hectic. I'm telling you, it could be setting up everything in there.
I don't know if we'll be ready by the fourteenth. Think we'll have a bid on the floor by the fourteenth?
Well, can you do it other than Friday? Do it other day than a Friday?
Yeah.
Oh, darn.
Which one? What?
Do it on, do it on a different day than a Friday.
Thursday?
Wednesday? Wednesday, Thursday?
We can do Thursday, twentieth.
We have thirty minutes.
Yeah, thirty minutes, we'll probably do it, honestly.
At noon?
Thirtieth, no, the twentieth at noon. Thursday, the twentieth at noon.
At noon.
Okay.
Ag.
That's okay. Okay, your question.
How much have you guys spent so far on the roof?
Uh, let me think. We did sixty-seven thousand on the roof. We spent
Eight grand.
Eight grand on the heating and air. And we spent, um,
And the gas line.
We spent thirteen on the fans, which four of that is reimbursed from, um, the rec center.
Yeah.
And then we've spent a little bit more, let's see, that's about it. That's all we've spent really now.
Four on the gas line.
Four on the gas line, and then just.
Then what we're accumulating down on the foyer.
Yeah.
And the women's restrooms and the men's.
Yeah. Cause we're putting ADA sinks in there for.
And so what are you, what are you doing, what are you, what are you doing in the restrooms?
Now, well, we've gotten rid of all the old rusted fixtures and the rusted, uh, suspended ceiling parts because of all the roof leaks.
Okay. Right.
And, um, we put all new grid in, put LED lights in there, which has reduced the number of lights in there. We're putting new ADA seams, ADA faucets, everything ADA compliant underneath. And then, um, we're redoing the interior walls and the foyer.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold off and not do the ticket booth until after car show, cause I want all this buttoned up before.
Yeah.
And then we'll start in at the ticket office there, and then that next one over.
Yeah, everything we've done to this point has been, you know, truly getting those areas. It's not cosmetic. It's, it's actually to make the facility better and more efficient. The next portion will be cosmetic. I mean, cause the building can function as a building without looking pretty, but being pretty makes you proud of it.
Okay. Okay. The twentieth at noon.
I agree.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And that, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, when we adjourn from this meeting, we're gonna take five minute break and we're gonna have a, a trustees meeting.
Okay. I assume that we adjourn?
I second.